Okay. Bob and Michelle.
Bob, you're welcome.
Are you from the Warren Avenue?
Yes.
He's going to be showing his...
Yeah.
Better viewing.
Okay, thanks. Thanks.
Okay, we're opening this discussion with Bob and Michelle of Indian Consultants, our traffic consultant, who's done an evaluation of Warren Avenue and I believe has a few recommendations because he's brought about forty boards to show us. Bob, if you could, let us know what you've found out and what you recommend.
Okay. I'll start by saying that I've since a couple of weeks ago completed a memorandum and summarizes what I'm going to describe tonight. It'll be five copies for Warren along with the expanded version of the concept plan for Warren Avenue. Just for context, this was intended to outline various properties. The context of our evaluation really was essentially the nexus of Gun Club Lane and the Ogilvy Property, which is accessed by a way, an accessway, fifteen-foot easement over town property. It is also a section of Warren Avenue that is being proposed for residential use under a 40B process for seven units of apartment dwellings. Just in a closer view of things, we've got the Ogilvy's property in this orientation with a series of buildings and associated parking. Here, we've got, although it's not very clear from aerial, the Gun Club Lane connection, which is a very narrow roadway which eventually connects to the Jericho Town Forest and some residential units further down. And then we've got one, two, three buildings which comprise the properties that would become part of this 40B residential use being planned by the town. Of course, the Warren Avenue corridor itself...
Can you see? Yes. Thank you.
Is characterized as being relatively narrow. It's about twenty to twenty-two feet wide. And along certain portions, particularly this area, it has a curved alignment. From a traffic volume perspective, we've actually gone out and inventoried the traffic volume and speed characteristics of Warren Avenue to understand how it's performing during various times of day and day of week. And not surprisingly, the road itself is not a high-volume road, but it's got some interesting characteristics that stem from some of the commercial uses, including the seventy-five Warren Avenue use, the Ogilvy's use at the end of Warren Lane, Avenue rather. So this is a representation of what you'd see on an hour-by-hour basis on Warren Avenue. This happens to be for a weekday and you'll see that the overall hourly volumes really hover around forty vehicles tops over the course of an hour. And those forty vehicles tend to spike more in the six to six-thirty a.m. period and again in the earlier afternoon hours and are directly associated with what's happening at Ogilvy's. So Ogilvy's has the Western Tree Landscape Company, they've got Pure Solutions, and they've got the Ogilvy's warehousing component. So these little spikes occur and you'll see outside of those spike hours that the volumes are relatively low. They're between twelve and twenty vehicles per hour.
Hold on a second. So that spike in the afternoon, what time is that? You said early afternoon?
This is three-thirty to four-thirty.
So it's about when there will be school buses too?
That's exactly right. And again, in the morning, it's about six-thirty to seven-thirty. Again, you'd see a school bus or two in the area in that hour. So you look at Saturday conditions and not surprisingly, the volumes come down. They don't have the same kind of peaking characteristics. They tend to hover in the twenty-vehicle-per-hour range during its busiest periods, which tend to center around midday and somewhere between ten and fifteen vehicles per hour otherwise. This represents a combination of activities for Ogilvy's, folks who are visiting the Jericho Town Forest, residents doing their day-to-day travel. It's a little more consistent and of a lower volume than you'd see during a weekday. And on a Sunday, of course, volumes are at their lowest levels and are principally associated with residential use or visits to the town forest, generally less than twenty vehicles per hour. So this gives you a little snapshot about what's happening volumetrically on the road. Interestingly, when you look at particularly the weekday conditions, the vast majority of the trips during those higher hours are in fact directly related to the Ogilvy's property. We know that the Ogilvy's probably generates about ninety percent of these volumes, right? And that between twenty...
And what's your peak volume again?
The peak volume is it's thirty-six vehicle trips.
Okay, so almost double what you're finding today.
Correct.
Compared to what on Sunday? Because that's just your potential.
Yeah, so on a Sunday...
No, no, this is the other one.
This is way back.
This is at the very far end of...
Sunday's hardly got to do with any...
Well, in any case, it's the...
Well, the highest amount is ninety.
It has the landscaping guy...
It's like half.
It's half.
Yeah.
So you've really got activity levels that are halved on a Sunday relative to a weekday, which is much more indicative of what you'd expect for residential area or recreational area.
Any idea how many vehicles, what the impact would be for the new Ogilvy's facility that's coming along?
Right, so we've documented this...
By that, we mean the Pure Solutions? Is that what we're talking about?
Yeah. Right, so we've documented this in our memo.
Oh, okay.
Now, what's interesting is that we're relying upon the application materials for seventy-five Warren to make this assessment. And that application would indicate that they're only anticipating a three-employee increase as a function of that building expansion.
To start.
We have reason to believe that that may in fact, over time, be more, but the application materials are not explicit on that point.
But can I make a point? The Pure Solutions is already using seventy-five Warren now for their trucks and everything.
That's right.
But this is just moving three employees who are not on the trucks to the site.
It's actually private.
Or however many it is, but it's not moving the whole operation there because the busiest part of the operation is already there.
That is correct. And so they, and the expanded version of this would have the additional three employees, some of whom are already located in an administrative role, under twenty at a different facility. And so their projection is a total of nine onsite employees, four of which would be in the office, and five field technicians that drive in, pick up a truck, and leave again. So this is not expected to be a large increase in traffic, trips per se, and we're estimating, based on what we actually count for activity at the existing facility, that that increase would be over the course of an hour, four trips, two in, two out, and three trips in the afternoon, again, based on empirical evidence that we have from the existing operations. So it's not a large increase. In addition to the Ogilvy's property use, we've got the residential component, the 40B, seven units. That would add about four additional trips. So the combination of what's being proposed at Ogilvy's and the residential component is just under ten additional trips per hour, which relative to existing traffic volumes is maybe a thirty percent increase in activity. Still characterized as a low volume, but most important to recognize that substantial amount of the trips that are being generated are of a commercial type. So you've got the Western Tree Landscape trucks coming and going along with their trailers. You've got the Pure Solutions spray trucks coming and going during peak hours. You've got Ogilvy's commercial activity happening in addition to that. So that amount of activity, again, which we document specifically in our memo, is today, just for seventy-five Warren Avenue, the Ogilvy's property, a total of twenty-eight vehicle trips per hour in the morning between that six-thirty and seven-thirty hour, and then about sixteen vehicle trips in the afternoon peak hour between three-thirty and four.
So you're going for forty to sixty?
Yeah, so when you look at a weekday snapshot, you go from forty to fifty in the lower portion of Warren Lane, Avenue, I'm sorry, with those additional uses. If you look at an upper portion of Warren Lane, I keep saying that, Warren Avenue beyond or north of Warren Lane, that number goes up a little bit because you've got some residential influence from Warren Lane. So that forty puts a fifteen, that's about ten vehicle trips being generated by residents of Warren Lane. So in any case, in any piece of Warren Avenue, we're talking about a projected peak hour volume of sixty vehicle trips during the weekday period. So that provides a baseline maximum.
Morning and afternoon?
From a travel speed perspective, we've done radar recordings of vehicles on the road. These statistics are based over a four-day period and allow us to look at how people are traveling from a speed perspective. The speed limit on Warren Avenue is thirty miles an hour. It's a prima facie, it's not posted, it's a prima facie in speed limit. It's based on state law and residential density. So it's not uncommon to have that kind of speed, prima facie speed on this type of roadway. So that's not alarming or significant. When you look at the average or mean travel speeds over that four-day period that we surveyed, we're between twenty-two and twenty-four miles an hour. People, as a rule, generally use Warren Avenue in a responsible way. There's not a lot of speeding. The eighty-fifth percentile speeds are in fact below thirty. They're between twenty-five and twenty-seven miles per hour. And that indicates to us that while on occasion, one or two cars may exceed thirty miles an hour, by and large, statistically, most people are actually obeying the speed limit. They're not traveling at excessive speed. That said, doesn't mean that there should be measures to promote lower speeds, given the curved alignment, given the presence of pedestrians, bicyclists, limited visibility to oncoming vehicles along certain segments, and that weighs into our recommendations for the quarter. So that, volumetrically and from a speed perspective, is what we've found. We know that there's a certain level of traffic growth, but it's not extraordinary or significant. What ultimately led to our recommendations for the quarter had to do more with the mix in type of vehicles and pedestrians and commercial and residential activities. The presence of curved alignment, limited sight visibility, the narrowness of the roadway serving Ogilvy's property or Gun Club Lane, and the importance of being able to balance all of those needs in a responsible, safe way. We also understand that there's a certain need for school bus turnaround, municipal vehicle access, emergency access and circulation, all of which again factor into our recommendations. A starting point to our recommendations was just to look at what is currently planned for 40B layout, right? So we've had the benefit of getting plans from the town as part of the application materials for the 40B components, right, which are these gray buildings. And the concept there is to provide reinforced earth in this vicinity that would allow, in this case, a fire apparatus to actually travel down and be able to do a three-point turn to reverse direction if necessary. So that was a point of reference for us. What this type of design does not achieve is the ability for a school bus, for instance, to, with any efficiency, do the same movements. You don't want school buses going all the way down Warren Lane and not being able to efficiently reverse direction, right? So while this serves a certain purpose, we developed a concept that is slightly more functional than that, than that idea. And so here it is. This is a, again, a conceptual plan. It's based on available mapping and property line information, building location, that consists of several recommendations. You'll see that this is the existing Warren Avenue alignment. Warren Avenue legally, from a layout perspective, actually ends in this vicinity and then it becomes just a paved surface, roadway, that is officially not a roadway layout, but for reference purposes, we're going to refer to this entire length as Warren Avenue. Warren Avenue eventually connects to an accessway to serve the Ogilvy's property. The paved width is about twelve feet of the actual dimension of the right-of-way or the easement area that allows Ogilvy's to pass or recast is fifteen feet wide. And then you've got the Gun Club Lane roadway here, very narrow, two-way road. So we've shown here a sidewalk connection which is being contemplated by the town and is properly located on the north side of the road, provides accessibility eventually to Boston Post Road, but also comes up and provides accessibility for these residential units. One of the design intents here was to understand that over time, there may be some increased activity for folks who'll go to the future rail trail, Jericho Town Forest. So we don't really want that activity in this section. In fact, I saw one of the slotmen walking his dog down Gun Club Lane when I went to visit to take a day hike, and it's not uncommon to find pedestrians in Gun Club Lane, which again is a two-lane roadway, which in certain sections is only about eleven to fourteen feet wide. It's a very narrow road. And so the idea here is to build off of what the town's plans are for sidewalk connection to continue the path or sidewalk around what we're showing as a looped section of roadway that would allow pedestrians to access without having to walk within Gun Club Lane. So one of the features here is pedestrian-oriented and trying to physically separate the pedestrian activity from the vehicular activity in a way that's meaningful and ties in with the waterage plan for rail trail connectivity and the other things further to the west. The loop that we're showing here in red brick pattern to have it stand out really is intended to accommodate the municipal vehicle need of reversing direction on Warren Avenue. Unlike the concept that I just showed where reinforced earth section that could accommodate a three-point turn for a vehicle, what we're trying to achieve here is the ability to coherently turn vehicles around a paved, structured surface. Fire trucks, plow trucks, school buses, any municipal vehicle that needs to reverse direction would be allowed to use this connection. Its location allows for widening along a fairly flat section of roadway. There aren't any severe drop-offs or hills or walls or anything like that that could be moved or cut or built, but it is adjacent to this accessway, Ogilvy's. And to retain the integrity of that easement, we're showing this for sole and exclusive purpose of municipal vehicle use and is in no way intended to restrict, eliminate, or change the intent or use of the easement that exists for Ogilvy's. Now, when you look at the design types, the geometry that led to that conclusion was based on computerized modeling of various vehicle types so that we properly dimensioned this to only contain the amount of area that we absolutely need for, in this case, a school bus or, in this case, a ladder truck. So that dimension accommodates the, without having to do three-point turns and strange maneuvers backing the public way. So that's what's driving the geometry. The other elements of this plan include pavement striping along Warren Avenue that reinforces ten-foot travel lane, one foot shoulders. Visually, today, if you're traveling on Warren Lane Avenue, really no markings per se, and it's often the case that folks, particularly on the curved portions of the roadway, will travel in the center of the road. They're not hiking the edge of the road. So what the intent of marking this is, is to give folks a visual cue of where their vehicle should be within the travelway, not in the middle of the road, but along the edge of the road, so that there's no inherent conflict with, say, an Ogilvy's truck that's coming around the corner versus someone who's coming back from the town forest.
Is that a double yellow line in the middle?
It is.
Or is that something else?
Double yellow center line, single white edge lines on either side. And it not only provides a visual reinforcement of where you should be on the travel surface, it also gives the driver the perception that these are narrow roads and higher speeds really aren't something that is being encouraged here. This will tend to help meter speeds. In addition to the markings, we're showing what we call speed advisory signs that would reinforce a desirable speed for certain segments of Warren Avenue. So as you're approaching Warren Lane from Boston Post Road, you would place one of these advisory signs in a clearly visible area that warned of the presence of a curve indicated preferred maximum speed of twenty-five miles an hour in this example, which I think is appropriate. And that applies to both approaches to that particular curb section of Warren Avenue. For the area approaching the accessway in the Gun Club Lane, which are very narrow two-lane roads and are also proximate to the residential uses in the area, we'd advise a fifteen mile an hour advisory sign that, again, is prominently located in this case in the center of the way that accessway keels off and is visible for quite a ways away. So these...
Just a hold, where did you take the speeds?
Speeds were taken just to the east of Warren Lane on a straight section of road. And so it was an area that would be indicative of the highest speeds that would likely occur on Warren Avenue. We were careful to place the equipment in an area that would capture that highest speed activity as opposed to trying to take speeds closer to where all these turns are happening or where acceleration might be occurring from Ogilvy's, for instance. So this is on what we call free-flow section of road as well as being straight.
You're going down here where you're talking about double so, double yellow line?
Yeah.
How wide is that road now?
It's twenty-two feet. So we're really, you know, two ten-foot lanes and then one foot shoulder off, so that's So you'll see that there's a series of signs as well here that would reinforce certain control, particularly in this area. Today, if you're coming down Gun Club Lane, there's a reason you need to stop. I think most people would at least slow down because there is activity coming out of Ogilvy's on occasion. We'd like to reinforce the stop position or stop sign there so it becomes apparent to someone who's not familiar with the area that they really should stop and look around before they make a movement. Ogilvy's has recently placed a stop sign, it's on a tree, but it's there at the end of the accessway. By and large, I think folks who are coming out of Ogilvy's are paying attention to it, but not always stopping. Certainly at least slowing down has been my observation. We would advise placing a compliant stop sign, not nailing it to a tree, but something that's, you know, seven feet above ground, post-mounted, along with a small pavement stripe that would reinforce, you know, where you're supposed to stop. Now, because of this loop configuration, we'd also advise placing a stop sign just in advance of that loop. What that would really allow is for anyone coming out of Ogilvy's to have to stop and at least recognize whether there's someone coming in the opposite direction, whether that's a school bus or another Ogilvy's truck or an employee. We think it's advisable to have that stop control here as well.
Isn't that really very visible, that whole area?
It is.
Like have a blind area in there at all?
No, but, you know, I think it's psychologically better to have a stop sign there, you know, for someone who's not familiar with the operations of Ogilvy and they're just coming out, you know, to make a conscious decision to say, well, wait a minute, there's a stop, there must be a condition here that means that I shouldn't slow down or stop, particularly since we're advising that this loop be built for purposes of now having the school buses come through. Be awfully nice if someone stops, even if they could see far, they should stop and look around before they make a move. So it's a simple, simple measure. Not proposing major cuts and fills or anything like that. I think there are two mature trees that would need to be removed to accommodate this loop here and several smaller tree specimens that would need to be removed here. But by and large, visually, you were traveling up Warren Avenue into this area, you really wouldn't see this. You wouldn't see a remarkable difference from what currently exists. All of the tree cover and canopy cover would remain intact in this triangular area. The area that we're proposing this in is relatively flat. There's several smaller four- to five-inch caliber type trees that would be intact. We're not proposing a widening of Gun Club Lane. There are wetland buffer areas and things like that that constrain our ability to do that. So the character of Gun Club Lane would be, rather, would remain intact.
Are you saying that there's a triangular island in the middle of?
Well, what I'm calling a triangular piece of property would really be bounded by Gun Club Lane on one side, the accessway on another, and the property line for Ogilvy's in this area. So it's a triangular wooded area.
But are there trees like in...
You know that. Yeah, there are trees. It's sort of, they're small calve, it's pretty heavily wooded.
Yeah, it's hard to see from that distance.
They're saying there are trees here.
Yeah.
Okay.
See, they're actually...
I would see this much differently.
Right, they're actually serving significant trees on this plan.
So this is an island, right?
Yeah, so, wait, no, I'm not sure how visible it's going to be on this, but this is Gun Club Lane right here.
There's some big trees in there.
This is the accessway. This is the area that we're talking about, being a triangular wooded area. So it has little effect on that area, is this message here. We try to keep, maintain the character of the roadway as consistent with current character as possible. We're not proposing a widened Warren Avenue. We're not proposing a significant repaving or tree cutting or anything like that. We're providing basic functional value for a very specific purpose and in a way that does not violate the accessway that's serving Ogilvy's.
Whose land is that?
This is town property. It's all town property.
It's actually now housing trust property. That's officially housing trust, so there would be no problem?
No, not yet.
No, not yet?
It's in the works.
It's in the works.
By the time anything gets done, it'll be housing.
You mean the Affordable Housing Trust?
Yes. It'll be owned by them.
But I mean, that little section where we're talking about reworking?
Yes.
That would be...
Everything, as you mentioned earlier, Bob, everything from the end of Gun Club Lane, technically, from there, going to the left, right? That's all...
Right to the railroad tracks? No?
No. Out to Ogilvy's property.
Just to that area?
So all that in there is Ogilvy owned by the Housing Trust.
So there wouldn't be any issue with doing plant taking, doing a domain or anything like that?
It's just, I think it'll just be a legal easement.
Right.
Well, one question I've got is, what, instead of preserving the easement as an easement, what if the town just made that whole loop a public street? And then the only part of the easement left would be the little connector from Ogilvy's property to the loop. You wouldn't necessarily have to have the change in the color of the pavement or any of that, but just made that whole loop town road.
Would that be frontage?
Huh?
Would that be frontage?
Yeah.
Since the loop?
Yeah.
Well, legally, I'm not sure, because we spoke at one point about the notion of commercial access over residentially his own property.
Correct.
And there's plenty of case law that says that can't happen. So, you know, you've got to consider...
The question is, if we truncated that, we'd still have that fragment... The question is, if we truncated that, we'd still have that fragment of the easement left. It's grandfathered.
In the full 15-foot extent though?
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, what if the remainder of the easement, grandfather easement, because right now, the theory, Joel, is that you can access Ogilvy's over residential land because this easement is grandfathered. And so, but that's, you know, that's assumption number one.
The use of the easement is grandfathered, is that what you mean? For commercial purposes?
Yeah, the easement was established, I think, in '26.
Right. So we're-
So, I mean, there is tons of case law on this issue. And so the board, in the consideration of the Ogilvy's new building proposal, you know, expressed concern about the issue with the frontage, the lack of frontage, the expansion on that property, and the fact that it didn't have frontage and was only served by this easement.
So we wouldn't want to fool with the easement because that destroys the grandfather.
Interestingly, the, just as people can alter a nonconforming situation by special permit, theoretically could be altered by special permit to expand the nonconformity, the nonconforming commercial use of the residential land. I mean, if it turned out that for traffic engineering reasons it had to be tinkered with,
It would be a special permit.
The easement that exists could be altered by special permit from the zoning board of appeals to alter the pre-existing nonconforming commercial use of that property. Commercial use being, you know, just the act of, the commercial access.
Right. Well, that's interesting. What I was thinking, or what I was worrying is, what if this becomes the easement, just this little piece right here, and this, and the loop just becomes, it's just-
More than half.
More than half.
A public way.
A public way.
Yeah. Then anybody-
They wouldn't have to make distinctions, you know, between, you know, what kind of pavement or the other and-
So how many, how many signs are your, is your plan called for?
Probably too many from someone's perspective. We're, I haven't counted them, but, you know, there are probably in excess of eight. We go through that process of, you know, signs that would restrict the use of the loop. Do not enter, it's a one-way loop, do not enter. Municipal vehicle only sign, stop sign. And so there are several associated with the loop. There are several associated with stop control on the accessway at War, Gun Club Lane. There's three associated with the advisory signs.
But those, those are six signs there, the speed limit of curves.
Oh, well, yeah, if you count like individual, these are on the same post. All right, I count those as two each.
Those were speed advisories.
Speed advisory signs.
I sort of got what you're saying, Dan.
Yeah, about that rural character.
Yeah, about that rural character.
Yeah, and it's tough to balance, I mean, this is a very unique situation where you've got large commercial vehicles traveling in a very low-volume residential area that is also a gateway to a recreational use. It's the best of every world, all in one. So trying to balance all of those interests in a coherent way requires that you do what you want.
There's a woman in the audience.
Yes, you have a question.
Well, we have only two signs on the road right now, which I think you're aware. It's just the two children running. Because no one pays attention to the children running signs anymore, maybe those two could be swapped out for some of the new signage so that we're not adding, you know, eight more to two existing ones, so we're not totaling out 10.
Well, we got 12 up here.
Okay, well, so then we're up to 14. So I'm just trying to help at least mitigate-
I mean, for a small area.
Short area, yeah.
Not being a lot of sign.
It really changes the character.
It does. I mean, I'd like to think people's memory is, potential spans a little better than that.
So if all of Warren were made a public way, then you would eliminate a few signs, like the, 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 enter and all that kind of stuff, so that would help.
And do you really need to indicate, I mean, I can, I live on several, you know, so I understand all this stuff. I'm thinking maybe it'd be better to just have like, couldn't you just have like two signs saying 20 miles an hour? And just eliminate one of those and get rid of the curb signs and just-
Well, in the traffic world, I, these are not regulatory signs. That's an important distinction. So if the town wanted to place regulatory signs, the ones with the white backing and the black letters, you'd need to do a speed study similar to what we've done and base that posted regulatory limit at the measured 85th percentile speed, which I think we could justify 25 here, but you'd have to petition to the state, to MassDOT, for that, and that would have to be enacted, the board would select that. So it's a little bit of a process. So that is, that is doable, it's an option. Now, my experience-
So these are not, this is, we suggest-
Yes, these are advisory signs.
And, and in fact, if I'm going 45 down there?
No, if you're going 31.
Okay, 31, but you know how I always give you 10, 10 miles over that before I nail you. So I'm going 39, then-
They can give you a ticket.
They can give me a ticket, but it's like 30 because it's the unspoken state fallback number.
Primarily secure.
Right, yeah, that, that's really high speed to that road.
Well, yeah, and I don't think many people actually do that. I mean, I don't, I don't think anyone went faster than, I think it was 31 or 32 miles an hour. 85th percentile speed is a pretty good indicator of whether there's an issue. And there really isn't an issue, but the conditions and the character and the combination of the types of activity that are happening here justify a heightened awareness of traveling at or below a certain speed. And so these tend to be a little more visible and they're not common. You don't see these in a lot of areas. You'll see them in areas where there's a special circumstance. And the special circumstance here is justified by the curb, right? So if you're traveling on the approach to Warren Lane, I do it. I'm in the middle of the road because it's where it feels most comfortable, but I can't see more than a couple of hundred feet in front of me. And if it's, you know, early in the morning and there's an Ogilvy's truck coming the other way and I'm in the middle of the road, it's potentially a conflict, right? So slower speeds allow better reaction time to those types of circumstances. And that's why we're showing these places in and around where that curb portion of Warren Avenue is. We're not proposing to put these all up and down the road. We're proposing them essentially in that proximity from each travel direction. And as you approach the accessway where things really get narrow, that's an area we would prefer to see people traveling at 15 miles an hour. I don't, I haven't seen it, but heck, if you're traveling on Gun Club Lane, going to the park, and someone's coming the other way, someone's got to back up.
You're going zero.
Yeah, someone's backing up, and that's-
So the pavement and-
If we were, there would be the white signs with the black letters, that would be the official posting.
Regulatory.
Or we could put up the yellow ones.
Without-
Without any problem.
Correct. They have to, there has to be a basis for it, and we do have a basis for it. And you can do that as a town, there's no special requirement.
You know, the loop around, which is, you know, a sharp idea, so. Tell me about the trees that would be removed. And would they be able to not be removed? Could they be saved?
Well, there's a grouping.
In terms of location.
There are two mature, and I'm not a botanist or a tree guy, so I'm going to call these oak trees, okay?
Oak or maple, they're hard wood.
They're very large trees. Their caliber is probably in the order of, you know, 20 inches or so. I mean, they're significant. Two of them, I'm certain, would have to be removed to accommodate the location of that loop. You, we did look at ways of adjusting the locations loop where you can see one of the trees up here. It's actually surveyed. And there's another one, I'm sorry, here are the two, one, two. They actually are surveyed. And they're clearly within the loop. Place the loop further down, we don't have sufficient turning radius to accommodate the movement. If we push them further up, we're now in the, in the area of the triangular wooded zone where you have, start to have funny topographical things happening. There's a lot more pavement that would need to be introduced. There are more trees that would be affected. So this really represents the optimal location that has the least amount of impact of trees. And the two that are directly affected are those two. I'm not sure yet.
If I could add something to the conversation? We're proposing that turnaround between the two right-of-ways. That's roughly in the location that the Warren Avenue Housing Trust project proposed to offset Ogilvy's easement. And we looked at that from a standpoint of topography, saving as many trees as we could and giving us a, you know, reasonable deflection movement. But that is about the least impactful as far as the trees are in that small pie-shaped piece in between. We didn't plan on taking the two trees out on the other side because we had not widened the pavement.
In a, in a, as an aside, if the circumstance required that a vehicle pulled aside as someone was coming out, there's a secondary benefit of having this flare paved section. It's a pull aside, so to speak. I haven't seen this happen on a regular basis, but I believe that at some point in time, there will be two vehicles within this travel area. Someone's either going to have to back up or pull onto the landscaped edge of that accessway. There's evidence that that happens. There are rocks that are placed along here to prevent that from happening. So there's an added benefit of having this kind of a design that it allows some refuge from imposing vehicle if necessary.
In a limited number of times that I've been down there, I've seen that when somebody's coming out of Ogilvy's. Because there is, there is a rise, we're about where they have that crosswalk. That's about the top of the rise. So you come up from Warren Avenue and turn onto that easement, and they come up out of Ogilvy's yard, there's a bit of a rise there, it's five to six feet high. And you see people kind of hesitate coming out of there because there's somebody else coming in, so.
So the street north of the island where there's some of the paved, where some of the brick paved area next to the, yeah, that's two-way right there.
Well, the intent here is to maintain the access as a two-way access. That's how, that's what it is. It's a relatively low-volume two-way section that is used exclusively for employees and for commercial purposes. I don't have any evidence that it's been a problem, but it's certainly not ideal. Now, we're introducing the ability for, you know, municipal vehicles to use this area, and they don't today. It's unofficial to have this area to be able to pull aside to allow the vehicle to bypass.
Yeah, so I feel like since it's going to be two-way there, and then it's going to be one-way where you're doing the loop.
Right.
And especially if it could, if the whole thing becomes asphalt and a public way, I feel like you're going to need a double yellow stripe on the two-way section.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. If this becomes public way and this is designed, you know, for two-way travel, it would be marked that way. It absolutely would, right? The intent of this was to say, let's stay, keep status quo. We're not promoting this visually or otherwise as a public way. This is strictly for those in the know who happen to be driving a school bus or driving a fire truck or plow.
The alternative, excuse me, is to turn the school bus around on Ogilvy's.
Right, yeah.
And what are the pros and cons of that?
Yeah, that's, it's a really good question because, I mean, that's, that's a practical potential, but we have, gee, I have brought a question that's-
That's an agreement that's in place.
Ogilvy's lets them do it anyway.
It's in place.
No, it's, there's, Ogilvy's, Ogilvy's would allow the town to turn the buses around on their property. There's a letter of intent that, you know, between Ogilvy's and the town that would do it.
How do the buses turn around today?
Well, they turn around at the water department building, but that's something else.
Yeah, they're using this area informally and it works because there's really nothing going on there. That's got to be curbed, constrained, there's parking activity. So for somebody, in the memo, we actually have an exhibit that demonstrates the ability for a school bus to come up into this area and do essentially a three-point turn. That presumes that that area is kept free and clear of vehicular activity. And in the several times I've been to the site, I'm having a hard time visualizing that that will always be the case. It is often the case that this is very congested with various commercial vehicles. And in the application materials and site layout plan, which you can see a portion of in this drawing, this area will be in regular use and being parked along the building front of that 7,500 square foot building. You've got essentially, this is a residential unit with, I believe it's a garage below. It's not uncommon to see a dozen vehicles in and around this area. So to rely upon that, I personally would have questions of liability and feasibility in terms of it being regularly available.
Well, if we were trying to do that, it would require some coordination with Ogilvy's certain areas that maybe are reserved not to be parked except on weekends or something.
My understanding is, my understanding is there is a map of that specific turnaround in the agreement that the town currently has with Ogilvy's.
Yeah, that's what I thought. I thought I'd seen it sometimes.
It is. It's there.
Because this, I mean, it's a big enough space to, I mean, I think you'd almost turn around without doing it.
Well, it is-
That's a 7,500 square additional brake.
Six o'clock, seven o'clock in the morning is crazy.
It's a day before that building is even built.
Right, before it's built, right. John Field's been out there, counter parts has been on, mopsing.
I mean, I make it a point to take pictures of what's going on and where I am in the area. And I was there this past Saturday, actually. It was, it was quite busy. They had plowing operations going on apparently. And so they had crews kind of staging in this area in that circumstance. And so this entire area was impassable. I couldn't drive my car in there if I wanted to. When you begin to formalize the parking as they've shown on 750 Warren Avenue, the site plan, I have questions as to whether or not it will actually function the way that it showed on the plan. They showed essentially tandem parking spaces along most of the property. And the practicality of actually having cars perfectly parked in tandem in neat rows is belied by what actually happens on the property. I think it's a little more chaotic than what the site plan would suggest. And this is an example of that. I mean, you've got all of these, you know, trucks that by design have to be in and about various portions of the site, and it's nothing very formal about it. Triple parked cars here, it just, it's not conducive to guaranteeing that you're going to have regular unrestricted access if you need it, if you're a school bus.
So you're skeptical about the school bus turning around on Ogilvy's? The tractor-trailer trucks, are they a myth or do they actually-
I haven't seen them.
Ogilvy's claims they need tractor-trailer truck access to that property. Has anyone actually ever seen a tractor-trailer truck?
Well, I see the tractor-trailers going into the first Ogilvy's, but they have their, well, the oil trucks and the blue delivery trucks. The tractor trailer is a cab and reticulated vehicle, okay? In the last two years, I have not seen one, but then I'm down there at seven in the morning, so I may not see them in the middle of the day because that may be when they're having them come in. I know that the ones that come into the first Ogilvy's lot is Benjamin Moore, Roscoe, all those. And, you know, we get those maybe three times, three to four times a week, and they're coming in around seven, between seven and eight.
Yeah, I remember that when Ogilvy's was looking at the other configuration, there was a lot of discussion, fairly heated discussion about Ogilvy's part. They needed to turn around for the trucks and so forth. And I'm just, are these trucks virtual trucks or do they really exist? I mean, it would be great to find out. And if they do exist, how often do they come down the street?
How are they going to turn around? How are they gonna turn around?
Well, presumably if they actually do have those types of deliveries and there were clear paths, you could literally do, you know, consider this a hammerhead if it were free and clear vehicles. And, you know, I don't know that that is the case. My observations of the property on multiple occasions suggest it would be very difficult to do that. You have to really plan for it.
So what is the next step here? Betsy, what do you think we should, where do you think we should take this?
To the town manager and the board of selectmen. They're the street commissioners and look at various options in terms, I know that a couple of them have been involved in the deed research and easement research, so there's some legal issues. There's also some legal issues about if it were to become a public way, that loop, it would have to go to town meeting. The layout would have to be generated and would have to go to town meeting for acceptance.
But if you do wanna have that as an alternative, I think that needs to be drawn before you go to the selectmen.
What?
The public way version.
Oh, yeah. Yes.
Are there any conservation issues?
Based on the map, the mapping that we've been given, we don't believe that there's any special, any impact to an environmentally sensitive area.
I think we're out of the...
We're in upwind area.
The hundred-foot, and as well as...
Isn't it a two-hundred-foot there?
No, I think we're out of the two-hundred-foot there, too.
Yeah, I think those, if you consider the subtly edge of Gunt Club Lane is kind of a limiting factor. All of those buffer areas exist south of Gunt Club Lane. So we're in an upwind area that, in our view, not require special permitting.
There are some floods out pretty close to there, so far as the town would be, are there any other issues?
This is, this is actually in a relatively high area.
Yeah.
You know, the crest of this accessway is impacted in this vicinity. And the area that we're proposing to park in is relatively flat. It does begin to slow down, but we're talking about a great difference of probably less than a couple of feet over that distance.
Is there an ORAD or something that designates where wetlands edge is or...
The Land Tech plans for the forty-B project do indicate wetlands extents and buffer extents and where outside of those zones.
So the tan is the proposed sidewalk?
The gray is the proposed sidewalk, which we understand to terminate around this building. It's not yet officially designed or anything. The intent here is to show in a tan color the possibility of extending that either as a sidewalk or as a path connection toward the town forest. So that, the color difference would be displayed by, this is what the town's currently planning and what we're advising them to do.
And so, and those two trees are in the pink area, solidly in the pink area and not on the edge, right?
Multi.
Right, so you can't shift it one way or the other?
No.
One thing we might wanna do before we go to the selectmen is verify what the consequences of putting that little retaining wall in are in terms of grading and proximity to the each field.
Right, so we'll be sharing this autocad drawing with Land Tech, who's the consultant of forty-B. And I did look at that issue this past Saturday, and it really doesn't affect the vast majority of this wall. I think the grade differential is gonna be less than two feet, except for the area as you approach this tree, that's the high point, so to speak. That grade differential might be as much as three and a half feet. But that grading exercise is something that we anticipate Land Tech would do.
Okay.
To find how tall a wall they need.
How can we coordinate that? That's gonna be, because Land Tech is the housing trust's civil engineer, so what's the, how can we make the interface?
Yeah, we don't have, we don't have an actual mechanism to do that by contract, but we could ask them to take at least a cursory look to see if there was any, anything that stuck out that was having to either increase the height of the wall substantially or make it longer, so at least we'd know what the exposure was.
Right.
The other issue that I see there is that we're adding asphalt to that area, which we have been working very diligently to reduce. And the new detention basin that we designed is for the asphalt that we have planned. So I don't know if that will have an impact on the stormwater runoff in that area. I don't know the answer.
Yeah, yeah, I don't.
But that's something that can't be overlooked.
Right.
We'd have to check to make sure that whatever we've done as part of the housing project is still gonna work with that.
It could be pervious.
Could be.
Because I'm not, it could be cobbler. I don't know how much you like that.
He doesn't like cobbles.
It doesn't, and it doesn't work very...
Breaks out of the rash when he hears the word cobbler.
It doesn't work very long, which has been the experience of the town also. From sanding the streets, they just sand up all the pores, so it just becomes impervious again. It doesn't...
DPW doesn't like cobbles. They're always...
Or pervious, it's not, it doesn't work that long.
Right, right. But when you're going over them with a plow...
Pavers and bricks that catch corners.
How is the street currently marked? Is there a center line on the street? Nothing at all?
On Warren Avenue?
Yeah.
I believe there are portions of Warren Avenue that have faded striping, centerline striping. But it's not, it's not very evident, but along certain sections.
Because I'm just musing about what the road is gonna look like with these lines, double yellow line in the middle, it'd be a sidewalk.
It's gonna look like a driveway up to the old poller room, sorry.
I mean, the sidewalk's been approved, so to what extent does the sidewalk slow traffic down for a driver?
Well, I don't think, I don't think that feature's gonna narrow. In fact, it might, if you see a pedestrian on a sidewalk right next to the travelway, your inclination is gonna be to drive a little further from the curved edge, because you don't, you know, it's a person, right? The same way that as you're approaching a curve, it feels more comfortable to be driving in the middle of the road. You can see that if you just watch how people travel on Warren Avenue in the vicinity of that curb, I bet you every single person that you see, every vehicle you see goes by is gonna be in the center of the road, right? There's nothing delineating or reinforcing that they should be hugging the corner, the edge. And that's driving the suggestion that to reinforce that, you'd wanna have a center line that's very clearly marked invisible. People don't feel comfortable crossing over a double yellow line, you know? They can do it, but it's a clear signal that they shouldn't. It does change the visual nature of the road by design. That's what it's intended to do, is provide guidance for voters.
I'm just wondering, is some of the guidance possible instead of the lines?
Well, in Weston, don't we often just use a single yellow line on Church Street?
Yeah, we could do that. Yeah.
Well, we don't, we don't have the edge markings either.
Right, the edge markings really reinforce that.
It's a highway.
It seems like a lot, it seems like a lot for a high number of forty-two vehicles that trips in an hour. It seems like a lot of effort, work, and money.
Some of this came from the anecdotal comments that we had earlier, that vehicles coming in and out of ogulbees were tearing down the road. And so this is an effort to introduce traffic calming strategies into the system to make the ogulbees trucks go slower. So right now, we have the anecdotal stories about speeding trucks and the, in the actual statistical data showing that very few of any people actually speed. It may be that we don't have to introduce as many traffic calming measures because people aren't actually speeding.
These are, that's exactly right. I mean, these are all suggestions. These are conceptual nature. And if the objective is to retain as much as possible of moral character and visual character of the roadway, that's not a bad objective per se, but if the objective is to reinforce lower speeds, to enhance guidance of vehicles, that's what this does.
Maybe it would be worthwhile to have a neighborhood meeting and just unveil this to people who live there and get their reactions before we go to the selectmen.
I agree.
I think that's, people agree with that?
Yeah, because this, I mean, with all the suggested traffic calming things, this is really a big change.
Yeah.
You know, I'm just thinking, separate road, we probably have eight hundred vehicles an hour, and I am not exaggerating in the morning. It's twenty-five miles an hour, and we have, I think it's a single white line, you know? There's no way to straighten.
And they don't drive twenty-five.
Oh, no.
They're talking forty.
Right, they're talking flying, so.
They probably drive closer to twenty-five, yeah, single white edge line.
We don't want that on separate roads. We voted down speed bumps.
Well, and we considered other means outside of pavement markings, you know, traffic calming measures. There's nothing that suggested the need for a physical change of road alignment, what we call chicanes, right, where you misalign the road. There's nothing suggesting the need for that. It just complicates things from a maintenance perspective, town plows, you know? It's just not, so the next best thing and the lower cost thing to do would be what we're showing. Doesn't mean you have to, these are just suggestions, so.
Okay.
There you go. And that's, they actually have pothole decals, you know? But they look real.
Who's in a real pothole?
So if we have a neighborhood meeting, who should we contact? Would Kara Fleming be the, a good person to get in touch with or...
Sure.
So, Betsy, maybe you could just talk to Kara sometime and see what might be convenient for us to do a dog and pony show with them.
Do you wanna do it here or do you wanna do it...
Well, talk to Kara. Whichever, I think we could do it either wherever they would feel most comfortable. And then maybe think about going to the selectmen sometime in, I don't know, January and, you know, once we've covered a couple of bases.
Well, you almost have to do this the same.
Well, maybe. I mean, it's up to them. If they feel, if they want us to come there, if they think that would be better, that's fine.
You're talking about, you know, the pavement changes, trees.
You might want to have that laid out, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could do that with some...
Wait a second, we're talking about doing this A, this month, December, right before Christmas, or B, in January, wandering up and down Warren Avenue.
You'll only get all your Christmas gifts.
I'm just trying to think of a tour at the last sidewalk we had out there, you know? This is a big deal to have the whole neighborhood and everybody out there freezing their tooties off, walking around, looking at where the signs are gonna be.
No ticks.
True, but one of them's still there. Yeah, but hopefully they'll be frozen solid. Minus ten, they don't work around.
But I agree, if we're gonna do it, we should definitely target, take it out.
Wouldn't that be hard to do, Bob, do you think?
No, in fact, we did some work for Russell's, oil and new parking layout. That's exactly what we did. We just went with white marking paint and dashed it out, and it was pretty effective. So we can do the same thing.
I would suggest coordinating that well with the community, with the neighbors, because they're gonna see you out there doing that, and they're gonna think, oh, it's a done deal. What are they doing to us? So just transparency, I would recommend that.
Betsy's gonna give Kara all...
Well, maybe what I would do is get a list of people in the neighborhood and write a little note.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Saying, we're planning on this meeting, and there are gonna be people out there doing, showing, doing the layout. It's not a date of complete.
Wait a minute, so it's a date completed, it's going to be held outdoors? Or are we first going to have a meeting where people get to look at this kind of thing and get the whole program, and then if they feel the need?
Is the water building heated?
No.
No.
Can I ask a question? Is it possible to do a combination of those two things where you send out an email that informs us that hashtags are going to be, or hash marks are gonna be put around? On your own time, wander over there, see what's potentially gonna be proposed, so that we can come into a nice warm building at another date and have the presentation? Because I think it's a lot easier for people to just go walk over. I mean, I see this seven AM in the morning.
Over on their own time.
The only thing is, you usually need an explanation as to which marking is which, you know, which side of the street is it, unless you have a plan.
Well, we could, we could have a little sketch.
We could have a good copy of it.
You email.
I would suggest it came from you, Betsy, it would be better for the neighborhood. I mean, Kara's been trying to organize a whole bunch of that.
Right.
And I'm not sure, it wouldn't be better if it came directly from the planning board through all the voters, with a little note and a proposed plan and let people know, like you said, they're gonna be flagging out there just to let you know.
Yeah.
So instead of using tape, you would actually mark the ground unless there's snow?
Yeah, it's kind of your turkey. Yeah, right. There's a lot of ways to do it, right? So you put stakes out, the flags on them, for instance, that's another option.
Which we did for the trust walkthrough.
Right.
For the site walkthrough, the trust we did.
The best would be stakes with tape.
Yeah.
Color-coded, yeah, which is what we do with that.
I do agree, though, that, you know, if someone just happens upon these flags and stakes, what is this? There needs to be a reference point.
It's kinda scary.
And also, it should be absolutely, this is proposed possibilities.
Yeah.
It's an option.
These are options to look at, not that, like, I just don't want people coming in saying, oh, my God, this is the worst thing ever. How can people even think about this? You know, we need to, these are what we're considering. We need to remember it.
Yeah, in terms of the timing, you know, I'm not sure with the holiday and everything coming up, you know, I mean, it's, it's a little bit of work to get this scheduled and out and orchestrated.
I think it's hard for people in general to come up with a time right before Christmas.
Yeah, well, maybe we figure out staging it.
You know, those tall, you know, the...
Oh, you need a lot of them.
They're gonna be stakes designed.
Maybe we don't stake it until after the holidays, you know, sometime in January, you know, and do it then and just...
Then it'll be overcome by a vent with a four feet of snow, and you can just walk with like red paint.
Maybe it's next July.
Having snow there would actually help.
Yeah, it would.
All right.
Yeah, okay, so we'll work all that out, talk to Kara and, you know, see about when we send the notice out. We'll coordinate it and take it from there. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can you send this stuff to me or to...
Yeah, yeah.
No, you can't leave. Thanks for staying.
Sure.
Yeah, we are.
Is it eleven? It's ten thirty?
Ten thirty.
Sorry, my eyes are dry.
It's been an hour.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, y'all. Thank you for coming.